He actually started working in the late 90s. He and I worked together.
City, the system.
He left.
Together. The wording of the franchise changed, something like that.
Then he came back.
And I have a, I have an exhibit here that there's a change. Five or six years ago now, at least. It was a good day.
Putting that together.
It would have been Comstock.
A couple of weeks, I'm sure.
Yeah. Because whenever Rebecca came on, I said, man, it was Comstock. I guess that's the question is, is it going to be Comstock? Gilbert or the city of Galesburg?
Always has been.
I might get to a random question.
There's just so many hot button topics.
Yeah.
It's a legal question.
But we, but we. Well, it did happen.
The system should.
From multi-million developments to rescinding somebody's permit, you know, they have a ledger full of lists, to, you know, economic development deals, managing.
I don't think you're back.
Generators. Don't they one point? I know for a fact they have.
They did.
The most boys.
That's what I'm trying to get figured out.
Because the only time that generator runs is when it loses power.
You having a good summer?
Swishes over. Right, power source. I've had a lot of transfers.
What do you mean for power?
I got line power.
We've got six.
Six.
And I start up this as soon as I got line power.
I did not hear from.
Turn it off, click it back. There's no way that that can back feed.
So I'm thinking, well, ten degree if it got late.
And Steve, Steve, you know.
Those are part of my account. Committee. It's like my job, which I never know if it's. Sort of remember that.
I think we'll be done.
Cut that agreement. Tell them to go get their own electric service because if they don't pay. Are you ready, Libby?
Yes.
So I just want to remind you guys before I turn this mic on to speak to the people in the room, not to the person next to you. Thank you.
Thank you, John. Let's call the July 10th, 2025 Utility Policy Committee meeting in order. The first item is to set the agenda, any changes or corrections.
I'll move to set the agenda. Support.
Motion and a support, a second to accept the agenda as presented. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Next item is introductions and guests. I welcome Joe.
I'm Joe Bonham. I'm the Water Resources Division Manager here today because James Baker is at a class.
Thank you.
Where's your vest?
And we have a number of attendees online as well, from the public, from Texas Township, and Supervisor McFarland O'Rourke, and also from Stan Tech. Welcome, everyone. Next item is acceptance of the May 8th, 2025 draft minutes. I just have one correction I noticed yesterday, and that is on page eight, the very top, the very first word. That should be Cheri, C-H-E-R-I, versus instead of S-H-E-R-R-Y. Name is correct in the attendance, but. I don't have anything.
I would make a motion to approve the minutes. Support.
There's a motion by Peter, second by Tom, to accept the minutes with the one.
Modification. Has modified.
Modification. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Next item is public comment. Anyone present this morning wishing to make a statement to the Utility Policy Committee? There are none here. Anyone online? If so, raise your hand. Not seeing anyone. So we will proceed to unfinished business. The first item is the, there is item 6A1, the Neighborhood Expansion Policy. And this item is coming back to us. There were some, there's some corrections essentially. And let's see, I'm going to pull that up. And in the packet is a clean copy and a redline version that show, the redline shows all of the changes that are proposed. And they're basically corrections to the spelling, et cetera, grammar, and then some of the, the numbers that changed this year with the fees changes. And Tom, do you want to expound on that?
Yeah, it was really just corrections on the fees. The other thing is, is that there was one change that we made as a group. And it came, well, maybe not as a group. Again, this is Carriage Estates that we've been talking about in Comstock. And Brett Paget, who has been working with me from Comstock, talked about potentially using some township funds to help subsidize the, the private side or the customer side of that cost. And the question was, in talking to James Baker, when will that subsidy be paid on behalf of the private side? And he, he suggested, and I agree, that if there's any township subsidy, it shall be paid at the time of connection fees are paid. So at the time that the individual connects, just from an administrative side, then the system doesn't have to pay attention to, if there was a subsidy paid five, 10, 15 years before, the township has to pay attention to that. If they want to make the subsidy, and I agree that that's an appropriate way to do it. So we just add, made that one, one, one minor change to, for the UPC use of item number eight.
And the dollar change from the $6,000 to $3,000 is both on page one and whose two?
Yeah, that was, again, in discussing this, if there is a neighborhood project, that project will, as part of current policy, build a service lead to the property line of any occupied parcel. So that if somebody is there and connects, they would, they would only be paying the $3,000 because there would be a lead there. Now, if they were building, they would have to pay the whole $6,000, so.
And the $6,000 goes from the pipe to the house?
Yeah.
And this goes from the service connection or what have you?
And in that case, it's not, it's, it's not triggered by, by a, well, I guess you're getting a permit. You're not replacing a well for a new construct. You're building a well, so you're still getting a permit. And they would, at that time, they would be responsible to build the entire $6,000.
For a new home construction?
For a new home construction.
Yeah.
Only one other change on there, Tom, that I, if, small f.
Okay, yeah. The, the redline portion is in there, right?
Another thing on that is I think the total at the last bullet point under connections, we just have to redo the math.
The second bullet point lists the system capacity buy-in fee as $1,200. It's currently $1,175. So I think the rounding there affects the back.
Didn't that get changed to $1,200?
Not as far as I've seen.
Spoiler alert.
Whatever it is in Exhibit D.
So that is.
I thought we had raised that.
So that's Appendix D.
Appendix G.
In the 2025.
Because that's what it's going to follow. It's going to be Appendix G.
I'm still seeing that as $1,175.
Okay.
Who voted on that? Was that in April or May? I can look back at the minutes.
April. Well, Appendix D was in April. Appendix G is part of the annual.
Right.
Oh, oh, oh.
That would have been.
The city does.
That's when it will change. Okay, so that's when it will change. It is recommended, okay.
Okay.
So for now, it's $1,175, okay.
And you want us to adopt this as a modified, Tom?
Yeah.
I would make a motion to adopt the Utility Policy Committee non-emergency existing developments slash neighborhood water extension policy as modified.
Today with the change to $1,175?
Yes. Support, David.
There's a motion by Peter and a second by David to adopt the amendments to the neighborhood non-emergency existing developments, neighborhood water extension policy as presented with the change to the, let's see, the fee to $1,175 from $1,200. Any discussion?
Make sure all you're working on.
Almost there.
We'll see you again next week.
Yeah, what the next question.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Next item is an update on the capital improvement plan. And the director typically gives us any points to be aware of in terms of the capital plan. And I don't know if there's anything that Joe or Anna that you would like to share.
I'll look for the Anna. Is that, I, I don't know if any.
Yeah, I, I don't, I don't have updates where we've started working on updates for 2026. And I expect those to come before you in a couple of months.
Okay.
September meeting possibly.
Thank you. Okay, item, the next item is the UPC per diem compensation. And I, I don't know that we have any information on how that is proceeding. So we'll pick that up, I think, in August.
That was approved, right?
Yes, it was approved. I think it needed to be implemented, so it was just an update if, if that was going smoothly or if there's anything else that this group needed to do.
Right, I think that it was in the city's hands.
Yeah.
It's going to have to be on the city commission agenda. Is that accurate? Can we adjust that independently or does that have to be approved by the city? I do not know what the city's policy is.
Okay.
I think, yeah, I'm not up to date on the particulars there. I know that this group moved it forward and then left it with James to implement. So whatever steps are needed there.
Maybe a contract expert would know that up to town.
I do not know.
Okay, well, I'm going to follow up on that just to make sure.
The next item is the, I think I have a different. We have the, it's called in the agenda, the Galesburg North 35th Street Franchise Amendment. It actually involves three parties, Galesburg, Comstock, and the water system for the city of Kalamazoo. And with that, I, we are looking, we are looking for this body to make a recommendation on moving the franchise agreement change forward. Is the system involved, involved with that, making that happen? And with that, I'll turn it over to you, Tom.
So we had talked about this before, just between the city of Galesburg and the city of Kalamazoo system, serving areas, the city of Galesburg is serving areas in Comstock Township with a franchise agreement. And the city of Kalamazoo is, and the city of Galesburg is serving areas in Comstock that are not in the franchise area. And the city of Kalamazoo system is serving areas that are in Galesburg franchise. So we're just trying to clean that up. They'll make sense to, to make those connections. Sent out a letter to everybody, Comstock, to James through the system, and Galesburg, and asked for input. James is on board. Galesburg is on board. Galesburg is suggesting, there is one parcel that I wasn't aware that they were serving. It's Alien Auto Care. It's on the map that I just handed out.
So who is serving, is it they are serving?
Galesburg is serving Alien. So we will just make that change. So for the people online, the, the, in the Galesburg area, yep, right, right there. If you can see that hand, that's where it is. We had picked up the, the frontages along 35th Street to keep it in the Galesburg area because the Galesburg pipe is there and they're being serviced already. But along the line, they ran a long service lead and served the Alien car care. So with that one minor change, everybody's on board to make these franchise changes. So we just have to figure out how to make it. Because right now, it is just a Galesburg-Comstock franchise agreement. And we probably need some legal advice. Does that agreement need to be, does that franchise agreement need to be changed? And then it automatically becomes part of the city Kalamazoo system because it's, Comstock is a signatory to the agreement? Or do we have to have a new agreement? I don't, I don't know the answers to those questions. Is that something that the UPC should ask city attorney to opine on?
Seems like, just thinking, based on the presentation we had before, that parties are all in agreement of this, that a potential motion could be to approve this change as recommended and to request that the city of Kalamazoo move forward with whatever necessary steps are needed to happen.
Yes.
And that way, it kind of would be up to the city to work with the attorney's office and documents and things like that.
Is that your motion?
Yes, yes, it was. Thank you, Peter.
Historically, as you stated, it would have been Comstock and Galesburg coming to this, to the term. So with the Water Services Agreement now, it raises the question of, as who originates this agreement?
I would think that'd be a good question to, for Joe to work with the city attorney's office on to.
Yeah, definitely.
Make it happen.
Yep. Yeah, and then this, this step is, everybody's on board. In fact, communication. Next step is to put it into formal agreement.
I would second that motion.
So there is a motion by Jeff Chamberlain and a second by Peter to, I don't know if I can restate that.
To approve the Galesburg North 35th Street Franchise Amendment and request the city to move forward with necessary next steps.
You're good with that, Peter?
Yes.
Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Next step is the quarterly financial report. And there's a summary in the packet that Peter put together. And I'll put that up on the screen. Is it correct?
Yes, yes, it is. So in the past, I've received quarterly financial reports from the city, the revenue and expense reports for the water fund. And I've provided some summaries of that data here. And the first document that you see in yellow, I'm just trying to highlight totals for operations or capital or what have you on the right. The detail on the left is right off of those reports provided by the city. And in the first document, we're just looking at where are we at budget, the actual. And I focus my attention on the first yellow component, which is the operations. So operations are at 33% of budget. And keep in mind that we're looking at six months. 50% might be a good place to be. Realize that the accruals or bills for the month of June will likely be paid in July. So there's always a timing issue here. But from a budget perspective, expenses are at 30, 33% of budget. And then I move down and I take a look at where are we at from our operations subtotal for revenue. So from a revenue perspective, budgeted $41 million, and we're at about $16 million or 38%. And again, keep in mind that people are receiving water and they're billed quarterly. And typically, that quarterly bill received in the month of July or August was for services in June. So there's always this kind of lag until the end of the year when the audit results in accruals by the city. And so I like to look at, how did we do compared to last year versus, I like to look at the budget just to make sure we're within our means, but also to look at, where were we last year? Are we doing better, worse, or more or less? So another thing that I, I added several quarters ago was the revenue review. So the next page shows where we are from revenue versus budget, operation revenue, and what makes it up. And the thing that kind of pleased my interest was that if you take a look on there, there is a system capacity buy-in fee of almost $400,000, and that was a contract amendment. And this is the year then in which that would be occurring. So that's a pretty substantial piece of money. And I calculated out the REUs at $1,175. It's about 306 connections for that period of time. Now, that could be.
For the first six months.
Yeah. And so that might be, you know, a big business that has a big meter, or it could be 306 houses. I don't know the answer. But, but helpful to support the system. And then you can see here just where are the dollars coming from, in-city, out-city, ready-to-serve fees versus the volume side. And if you look at the bottom, you'll see there's a 50, 990. And if you go into the page before, that's one of the, that's the operating revenues that I'm just kind of drilling down on to share with you.
This, this paper's helpful, and I, it took me a few times reading it to understand that you've got the budget here and there's some revenue, such as that system capacity fee that was not budgeted.
Right.
But it's additional revenue. Are there any of these, and there were some that were running close to budget? Were there any concerns on this one page?
No, there wasn't for me. I just think it's interesting to see where are the dollars coming from.
Yeah.
And so this is the detail that makes up that line on the previous page for revenues, that total. And then I provided, and I'm trying to be consistent, so I try to provide the same thing month after month. The next document is just looking at the actual water fund detail, those expenditures and revenues, 2024 versus 2025 June. And so the first column is 2024, the second column is 2025. And again, I give you the operations total there, and you can see actual operation expenses are increased from the previous year. And if you take a look at actual revenues, they've been, I'm sorry, they decreased, the expenses decreased and the revenues have increased. And when we get to the next slide, I want to address a question that Mayor Anderson had at a previous meeting on the last quarter that we took a look at these things. But the rates went up, so I would expect that the revenues went up. And then on the expense side, there's a detail on the next slide that kind of gives you an idea of why that might have happened. So the first page was, we're living within the means. Second page was kind of where are the dollars coming from? This is how are we doing compared to last year? And I tried to get this out to you in advance so you could take a look and bring questions or what have you. You have Steve here that would know the answers. I'm, I don't have the intricate detail known, but if you take a look at the next page, there's a summary of what are the expenses this year versus last year? But this is my categorization of those expenses. So capital's up substantially, and I think that's a timing issue, and we know the projects are there. It's just when can they get going in the spring and how big is the project? You take a look at chemicals are actually down. That can be timing of when they're receiving those chemicals or when the bills come in. But very consistent with the previous year, city internal charges, you know, that's really, I think, where, you know, you might be sharing some labor and you're paying some of those costs to another city fund or other activities that are kind of shared by the city. And then we have debt services up. Well, debt is up. Supplies and other, you can see that's up slightly. Utilities are very consistent, and that's where there was a question at the previous quarter, why were the utilities up so much? And Mr. Anderson wasn't here when James shared with me that there was some things that had to be moved back into last year at the audit timing. And also that they were using additional gas because of the generators they had put online. So it's very consistent for this month, but James did follow up with me. And then we have wages were actually down, and that can be a timing thing. But I actually looked into the detail of the wages, and I suspect that there was more because I can see there's more costs in the meter area and capital for labor in 2024. And so I suspect, and I don't, I would ask, I suspect that there's people that work on water and sewer. And so if they're working on sewer stuff, they're not working on water. And if they're working on water, it looks like they were working on replacement of meters last year, maybe earlier or what have you. So perhaps a timing thing, but that's my observation, looking at the detail. In the detail, I can see there's more labor and capital and meters for 2024. And that is what I see in the financial information. And I can provide you this in Excel, and you can click on it, it'll show you every line. But there's, what, 800 lines? But there's what, 800 lines or some crazy amount of lines of expenses? So they can keep track of things. One thing I did note too, if you look on the previous page, there was a new category of expenses. I didn't point it out, it wasn't substantial, but I noted it because I had to change some things on my side. And you can see line 592 on the left, weather and emergency events. And there's some costs there and I suspect that was the result of some of the heavy rain that they had and perhaps categorizing expenses a little bit differently. But it's just a different category that was not there in the past. But hopefully, I think it provides us with a little insight of kind of what's going on at a big, hopefully, big picture level. And the details are if you want it.
This is very helpful. There are none that we would do with the annual audit? Did you also prepare a memo?
Yeah, I put together a memo on this and I thought we could kind of use it as a template each year. And we can put more on there or less. Or Steve, if you want to present the audit to us, you could do that. But I just took a look through the audit and I took a look at the contract and the contract says we're required to get it. And so since we receive it, it's on the website, it's on the Michigan Department of Treasury website. I didn't try to get the whole thing printed out in the packet. I just tried to extract some components for our consideration. So at the bottom there, I just said I provided water fund and financial statements. And I also provided the revenue bond coverage. And on the following page, the whole audit's available on the Michigan Department of Treasury website if you want to peruse it. And I just put together some notes and I tried to put a page number on there. The financial statement, opinion on the financial statements by the auditors was unqualified. So that's the highest opinion you can receive. It's that the financial statements present fairly, no material effects, the financial position, results of operations, cash flows. Also, the city is required to have what is referred to as a single audit. So an audit of the financial statements and their compliance with federal grant requirements. That results in two additional opinions. There was an opinion on federal grant compliance and there was no significant deficiencies, material weaknesses, or any findings identified. And the importance of that is $13 million of that federal financial assistance was actually funding for water projects. It was actually the proceeds of that drinking water revolving fund, I think. But on the schedule of expenditure of federal awards is $13 million. I think it's drinking water. So that was specifically audited by the auditors and no issues identified. Great, kudos to the city for that. There's also a report on internal controls over financial reporting in the audit that's required under government auditing standards when you have a single audit. No significant efficiencies, no material weaknesses identified, which is great. And as part of the contract, first on the opposite side of this page, it says if there are issues, the city needs to address them. But there's no issues to address, which is great. And then I just noted on page 51 of the financial statements, there is a statement of net position. Water ending net position was $29.5 million. So that's the difference between assets and liabilities for the most part. So we're positive, no deficit. Change in net position was $56 million added to the bottom line. And I wanted to note there that $43.8 million were actually contributed. So there was some grant funding and there was also developer funding. So you have that construction in aid where somebody attaches a new subdivision that ends up on the city's books as a contribution. So in addition to the bottom line of $56 million, contributed component, $43 million. Debt issued, $33 million. Purchase of capital assets, $34 million. There is a large component that was contributed that isn't included in that purchase. And then we have cash contributions, $7.3 million. And I think that is likely some of the grant funding, but perhaps some of the debt forgiveness as well. And then debt service coverage, there's a schedule of debt service coverage in the audit. It's on page 216. And the debt service coverage is a calculation saying how many times could we pay our debt, our principal, our interest on that debt with dollars left after operations? And it's much more complicated than that, the entire schedule's within what I provided. But this year it was 2.3 times, is how many times we could have paid the principal and interest and operated the system.
Not the annual payment, not the-
Yes, 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 yes. Just the annually, very good point. And the required for our policy that we proposed to the city, which was adopted, the utility financial policy would be on a minimum coverage of 1.4. So that was not with coverage of 2.3 times. And when we worked through the rates for this year, it'll be interesting to see, okay, we were projecting here, we ended up here, and where do we want to be next year? That's my look at the audited report. Steve, please, you know, provide us with more information. But I would just say that, you know, the opinions are as best you can get. The numbers are positive and so that's great. Things seem to be going well. And the city, I'm sure, they spend a lot of time doing this stuff, so we appreciate it.
Since we do have Steve here, we do have, you say, an outside, I'm sorry. The city has an outside firm that does the auditing. They can come in, Steve, is that correct, and do a presentation?
We can, we can, we can come and present if we prefer to have them do that.
Okay, so I guess that's just something for the UPC to think about for next year that if we ever wanted as a UPC to have the actual auditors come in and do a presentation. This is very thorough, thank you, Peter. That's just, it's an option that's available to this group.
One question because of our discussion yesterday that the city and the township water assets are all in the city's books. So this capital contribution would include, for example, the Ashma Waterline extension that was done, they completed last year?
Yes, yes.
And I don't know the dollar amount on that. So that $56.7 million, you know, we don't have the list of what that was.
Right, right. So there's $56 million of net income or change in net position. Different terminology for government versus a business. And $43.8 million of that is actually contributions. So it would be developer stuff and it is also likely like forgiveness of debt.
Okay.
Or grant funding for lead lines. So it's a big number, a lot of it right to capital. That contributed amount likely is 100% capital. So it's not like you put $50 million into the bank. A lot of it's in the ground.
Okay. Any other questions or discussion? Thank you. Item number C is the 26 water rate setting.
I asked to have that included down here and I didn't realize James didn't do it. I'm not sure if we will or will not know the answer. I wanted to understand the timing, when things were going to be.
My basic understanding is that the goal is to have an overview of the 2026 rates at our August meeting and ask for a recommendation of the UPC at our September meeting. And then the intention is to go to the city commission in October. And I would also like to discuss today, last year you participated in that? Some of the small group discussions with StanTech and the city, et cetera? And you were seeking this group's approval for you to do that? And I think we certainly have that again. But if you want a formal vote, you should consider that today.
Yeah, I haven't been asked if I, James, to participate in it. I can, and if you would like me to, I will. And maybe that's the plan, but I just wanted to better understand kind of the timings.
Yeah, I think there was a comment James made. I think that is the plan, but-
Okay, okay. Yeah, so if you'd like me to participate, I think you should say participate.
Okay.
And the financial information as well, it takes me time to put that together. If you don't find it useful, ask me not to do it. I'm fine with that.
I think it's very good on the financial statements. I appreciate that. Why don't we, before we get into StanTech's discussion, I think they have an overview of the rate process today, I saw in the packet.
That's not an overview of the rate making process. That's a, and I may have misread it, but this is actually how well the rates fit the customers. So are the customers that are benefiting from water, commercial, residential, whatever, paying their fair share of the cost?
Oh, gotcha, okay.
And I thought in the email I saw from James that that would be reviewed at the next meeting, but I could be wrong.
Okay. So, but still, before we get into talking with StanTech, let's go ahead and discuss your participation, just so we make sure we cover that and don't forget it like we did last year a couple times. So.
I think it's highly valuable to have Peter involved in conversations to bring that back to us. So explain that to us.
Is that a motion?
That's a motion.
Okay. There's a motion by Tom and a second by John to request that Peter participate with the rate setting or to recommend that Peter participate.
And I would give this input is, last year, I don't think I spent maybe seven hours on it. I think we met maybe two, three times. It wasn't like tons of hours.
So there's a motion on the table. Is further discussion on this item? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Okay, and then StanTech is here today. Is there additional discussion that, or information that you would like to share with the utility policy committee today?
Yes, good morning. This is Danica Katz from StanTech. We also have Joey Murphy on the call as well. We were planning to share today some of the preliminary findings, as Peter mentioned, on the cost of service. This structure is a little bit different than what we've done in the past. And so I was just hoping to walk through a couple of those slides and then just kind of talk about next steps as far as the rate recommendations and how we'll proceed with that. So I have a handful of slides that I'd like to go through if that works for everyone.
Yes.
Perfect, okay, I'll go ahead and share those. All right, can everyone see the water cost of service slides up there? Okay, perfect. All right, so this first slide here, I just want to talk about the rate study process. It's a little bit different than what we've done in some of the past years. Typically, what we'll do as far as the process is we'll work on the financial plan first, which will determine the needed rate increase. And then we'll do the cost of service, which would identify how that rate increase gets spread across the customer classes depending on how they're recovering. This year, we've switched the financial plan and the cost of service. And the reasoning for that is we wanted to give ourselves a little bit of time to be able to understand the inner class so that we could be able to apply that rate increase between those customer classes and start to put a little more analysis into that than we have in the past. And so this order is just a little bit different, but we're going to talk through kind of the preliminary cost of service findings. And then, like it was mentioned, we'll be presenting rate recommendations for the financial plan in the August meeting to you. And then I've also included the rate design in there as well. Any questions on that before I keep going? All right. A quick slide here just to talk high level about the cost of service and the goal. Typically, when we do these cost of service, the goal is to determine between all of the customer classes how each of those customers are recovering compared to their revenues that are being collected. We'll use the AWWA approach and standard industry practice when we go through these analysis as well as following the master, sorry, the water service agreement and your rate-making methodology to make sure that we're meeting all of those requirements as we go through. All right. This next slide here, one of the other things that we're doing in this study that we hadn't spent as much time in the past doing was a demand analysis. And we talked about this on one of the prior year UPC meetings. But now that we have a four-year period of billing records, what it allows us to do is really confirm that those peaking factors are consistent across the different years and make sure that we're using, you know, accurate numbers for those because those are what informs the cost of service results. And so you can see over there to the right, I just put an example for the seasonal customer class. In the past, we saw some pretty big fluctuations between the years on those peaking factors. And so what we're recommending in this cost of service, now that we've gone through and done the demand analysis, is utilizing a four-year average, which will balance out or level out those peaking factors to account for any fluctuations for seasonal patterns and things of that nature. We've also gone through the data and kind of pulled through any anomalies or, you know, billing data values that looked out of the ordinary that might impact those peaking factors. And, you know, talked with the city about whether or not those needed to be extracted and things of that nature. So in this study, just to highlight, we've just spent a little bit more time kind of reviewing the billing records, reviewing the peaking factors, and just making sure that we're really accounting for those correctly so that the cost of service comes out in an accurate and representative way.
There's a question, Danica?
Sure, yeah, absolutely.
So just to help me here, say, if you look at like 22 and 23, you look at our graph and you look at the numbers on it, why is the number smaller in the larger portion of the bar graph? 2.05, for example, and 2.81? I'm not understanding, does that number not represent the?
Yeah, so I realize that's a little bit confusing, so I apologize. The numbers are the peaking factors, which are calculated separately for the inside city and the outside city. The bars represent the usage. So for example, in 2022, the inside usage was 1.2 million and the outside city was the difference between the 16, sorry, the 1.6 million and the 1.2 million. And then just wanted to throw in the peaking factors there, but they're not necessarily-
So there's no association between the bar graph and the peaking?
Correct.
Tell me exactly what the peaking factor means then?
Yep, so the peaking factor represents like a max month to an average day demand in that year for the seasonal class. And so, for example, like the 4.49 would represent, you know, a higher max month compared to the average. And so therefore, it's saying that you have a higher peaking factor in 2023 for that seasonal inside city class.
And that peaking factor, I believe, is going to be used to allocate some of the cost more to people who want peak, you know?
Correct.
Versus the people that are baseline, I use X every day. So like if commercial uses more peaking, it's likely residential watering. But they would get more costs of perhaps the water towers or whatever that might be.
And the left column is what again?
This is usage.
Usage, okay.
Consumption, yeah, consumption or total usage for inside city for that seasonal class.
Why does it, why do the peaking factors fluctuate so? Why does it, why do the peaking factors fluctuate so dramatically year to year? I mean, 2022 to 2023, inside city goes from 2.05 to 4.49, I miss. More than double.
Yeah, and that could, so sometimes we see those variations, especially with the seasonal customer class, due to like seasonal patterns. So if it's a really dry year versus a really wet year, we'll see some big fluctuations there. There's a handful of, you know, reasons that we see those fluctuate, but that is ultimately why we're recommending that four-year average, is just because of some of these fluctuations. If we're to base the cost of service, you know, on one particular year, say this 4.49 to Peter's point, that would put a lot more cost onto that customer class where, you know, if we were to use 2.05, it would put a lot less cost. And so we just want to make sure that we're using a representative period.
And then this is one of those three areas that you're looking at in the same fashion for the, and then you're looking at inner class shifts and shifts between inside and outside?
Yep, yeah, I just wanted to put this here as an example for the seasonal, but we're going through this very similar analysis on all the other classes as well.
Thank you.
Okay, and then when we look at the fiscal year 2025 cost of service summary, what you can see here is, in orange, is the 2025 rate revenue for each of those customer classes. And in black is what we would be calculating as the revenue requirement. And so what this would be saying is that single family would be under recovering, multifamily just slightly over recovering, commercial pretty close, industrial just slightly over, and seasonal just slightly over. And so where we would go from here is we would say, based on this 2025 summary, once we go through the financial plan and we determine what the needed rate increase is for fiscal year 2026, we would then spread that rate increase across the customer classes as appropriate based on these results in order to get each of the customer classes closer to their cost recovery as best we can.
And?
And so, yeah.
And this is all based on like budgets, estimates, prior stuff?
Correct, yeah.
Ultimately, ultimately, if it rings a lot, things are different. But they're constantly trying to match the two, the revenue side and the expense side based on that, okay, EWWA or whatever.
Correct, yeah. To Peter's point, this is kind of a snapshot in time based on the 25 budget, but as we move forward and we bring in the 26 budget into the financial plan and we start to look at that, you know, these may shift a little bit depending on how those shake out.
But a rough assumption could be that every class but residential, the billing rate would be somewhat or slightly reduced then?
Yeah, yes, if we were looking, so, and that's kind of what I'm going to show here on the next slide, is so this is 25 results, but we're looking at the 26. And so what we're showing here, and this is just for illustrative purposes, because we have not gone through the revenue sufficiency to determine what that needed overall increase is. But what we wanted to illustrate here was that if we determined that for fiscal year 26, we needed a 5% overall rate increase or a 5% increase in total revenues, that single family may need to go up 6.75%, but multifamily, commercial, industrial, and seasonal may increase, you know, 3% or 4.5%. Or for example, seasonal, which was, had the biggest kind of gap, would maybe be held steady. And so this is just to demonstrate kind of how we would take that 5% and spread it out between the customer classes to get us closer to that cost recovery based on the results. So I think to answer that question on this last slide, although these would show the need to be reduced, we will still be needing, you know, a percent increase in the next fiscal year. And so there would be some form of an increase. It would just likely be less than what it would be for single family.
Right.
And so we'll be coming back to UPC once we get through that revenue sufficiency analysis and we determine what this final rate increase percentage is, we'll be coming back with cost of service results that are more final in the way of how they're spread out between the customer classes.
So you're going to bring us a rate calculation in August?
Correct.
When might we see that?
You're talking about like the meeting in advance of that?
No, no.
We meet with the city?
No, no, when might everybody here get it before the meeting? Would it be, it would be like a week before or something?
Yeah, yeah, like we usually just send the materials to James Baker and the city staff about a week prior.
Great, thank you.
I think you're requesting to have it a week prior. So we have time to review it, okay?
Yeah, absolutely. Okay, and then just to summarize here, next steps and what we've talked about, so we'll be coming to you, like I mentioned, with the RSA, the update for fiscal year 2026 to determine that needed increase. And then we'll also be identifying those varying customer class rate adjustments for fiscal year 2026 as well. And then, yeah, just the, you know, final results there and summarization and council presentations and so forth. All right, and that was all I had for those. Any other questions or comments?
Yes.
Well, I appreciate it very much. So we obviously have a very sophisticated system that tracks those costs per category in the operations side, right? And that is, does that show up on literally billing codes and time sheets and all that sort of thing? How do we track those costs?
I think, I think it's StanTech allocating the costs.
The StanTech allocating the costs.
Yeah, yeah, so based on the initial information that she provided, Danica, they are following like the EWWA standards. So they're saying like, if I have a water tower, theoretically, I'm not a rate, if I got a water tower, or let's say I have extra pumps because I need more water in the summer, that should be allocated to the people that use water in the summer. So I think it's them doing more allocation. But you do have all those expense categories. So they're saying these belong with, let's say, seasonal, these belong with, let's say, just daily production. And in the rate model, they're doing a lot of that stuff versus somebody saying, I'm working on, you know, summer water production or whatever.
Yeah, okay.
Yep, that's correct. The city has very detailed, you know, GL codes and line items that allow us to be able to allocate those costs to the correct functions based on those descriptions and categories and departments and so forth.
And along the same lines, this is Jeff. I would assume too, we can, we can track, like, a big industrial user is using X, so you can say industry is using 15% of the total water, single family is using X% of the total water, and then you could see fluctuations of that over time, too.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Yes, every account has a code, one of those five that she had on the screen. So we do know that seasonal, yep, that gets, you can run a report and say how much seasonal was used during a time period.
Sure.
Industrial, single family, multifamily, all of that stuff, we can pull out of utility billing.
Right.
So interesting and helpful, just on a pure perception side of things. For nothing else, you know, there can be a narrative that says, you know, why is it always on the backs of the, you know, I mean, absent the detail or whatever, why is it always the backs of, you know, the little person, the residential, and commercial is not getting boosted and corporations aren't paying more, it's always us? You know, there's a narrative that can occur around all that. You know, I get it, there's a data backup to that. You know, was it last meeting where somebody came and complained?
Yes.
Ashmore, right? So, and so in this time of concerns about that, once again, you know, it's, there's going to be an opportunity where people can express their discomfort with a rate increase that will come to the city commission in November, December. And so it's just, I don't.
There is a law, a law in Michigan that basically, I'll try to simplify it, what you, you have to pay for the proportional use and demand on the system.
Yeah.
And your category. So that's the, that's the real struggle when, I totally get it, because I pay a water bill, I got one the other day that I have to pay, and it went up. So I totally understand that and can appreciate that. But that's the, from the operational side, you can't do it. But if you were to remove every one of those, then the system, the demand on the system becomes different.
I think that slide number five.
Yeah, absolutely.
Single family is double the usage of everybody of the next closest category.
Yeah, that's correct. And through discussions with city, too, one of the goals and part of the discussion that we have is we understand that we're trying to get, you know, everyone closer to cost recovery, but also be conscious of those rate increases, too. And so, you know, maybe if 100% cost recovery was a 7%, you know, maybe we taper that down a little to get them closer to cost recovery while still, you know, being conscious of those increases as well.
Thank you, very helpful.
Great, thank you, everyone.
The next item is item D, a new, new item of discussion, the youth sports complex. And this came up, a question came to me, and then I, and then I viewed the county meeting, and there was some discussion about utility extensions for this project, water extension. Just wondered, was looking to James or the city, if there's any update or information on that for this group.
I do not know of any our engineer made.
Honestly, this, this packet was the, was the first time I had heard about this project, so I don't have any information beyond what's in the packet.
Okay, so we'll look to James, I think, next month. Next item is professional service invoices, and there is one additional invoice that was received this morning, and Wendy brought a hard copy of that, so we want to look at that as consideration as well.
I guess I move approval of two Kine and Newhoff invoices, 89105 and 89920 are the invoice numbers. First one is a total of 505, and the second one, which I think we just received today, was for $252.50. I move approval of payment of those two invoices.
I'll support.
There's a motion by David and the second by John to approve the two Kine and Newhoff invoices as described and presented. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Abstain.
Motion carries.
I move approval of Maine and Meridian LLC invoice, invoice number 00105 and amount of $303.
I'll support.
There's a motion by David, second by John, to approve the Maine Meridian invoice as presented. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Abstain.
Motion carries. Six ayes and one abstention.
Move approval of two Hefner Group LLC invoices, invoice number 01049 and 1055 in amounts of $42 for the first one and $4 for the second one. So I move approval of payment.
I'll support.
There's a motion by David and a second by John Crumb to approve the two Hefner Group invoices as described and presented. Any further discussion? Those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
I abstain.
Motion carries. Six ayes, one abstention. Thank you. Next item is committee member alternate attending guest comments. Anyone present in the audience today wishing to comment? No comment here. Any comment online? Raise, if so, raise your hand. Hearing none, member comments? David?
Yeah, I just want to recognize something. Just got a copy of a very complimentary letter from Charleston Township. Thank you for delivering that, from the Charleston Township Board, addressed to Jim and recognizing, appreciating for the, this is not water, but on the wastewater side, but for updating on the two transmission lift stations there. And I just want to say, I just want to say thank you for that. I want it to be, just just to be recognized, and I think this is representative, I believe, of the new working relationship that we've been experiencing here for the last few years. And I very, very much appreciate that, so.
I'll just, on the water, whenever I've had any questions, he's always been there. He treats me just the same as he does Ashmore or any other township, and that's great. Since we're the smallest, just as important to us.
Thanks. And I hope that this will represent a quick resolution of our contract negotiation.
You're here. Jeff, you coming?
Yeah, just one quick thing. We did spend a little time talking about the audit and just wanted to say thank you to city staff. There's a lot of money that flows through the system, a lot of grants, a lot of loans, loan forgiveness, lead replacement, contractors, all that. And once again, you know, Anna, Joe, Steve, James Baker, and everybody else, to get an audit with no findings on the federal end, the accounting end and all that is, again, just a good representation of just what happens every single day to get the work done, and it's getting done. So thank you.
Peter?
As Joe is here today, I think you put together an annual water report. And I just want to let you know that we thoroughly review it, and that is a very informative document. We appreciate that. And since you were here, I, I thought, hey, we should recognize that. That's got to be a project for you, so we appreciate it.
I have a lot of help putting that together from the group internally, and they all do a good job.
Thank you. Well, any comment?
Just the one, first of all, let me apologize for that. My target is, I'm just getting it from Phoenix, I've been there since Saturday. I'm on a different time zone than you right now. I got in late last night, and it, I feel it still, but my apology for being late. I did have a question, but it was for James, and I can't, I don't know if any of the staff can address it or not. You spoke earlier, last time we were here, he talked about generators, the purchase of generators, the system. A lot of system, a lot of people, a lot of users. I was out in Phoenix, I was listening to the radio one morning, and there was a problem where an area had had a brownout. And a brownout is a temporary loss of power. Sometimes it's due to the utilities themselves, because the other time it's done because of system failure. But then there's the blackout, where there's a total loss of, in our area would be consumers, if something happened major that we lost consumers. I believe we had a substantial brownout in 2008, somebody might remember that. I remember that, my wife and others were on the train, and the train sat on the track for several hours until power was restored. I believe we were a part of what's, what is it, MEAC or something like that? It's a 15-state area where power comes in, even Canada, the?
MISO.
MISO, there you go, I'm sorry. But if we should lose power on our system because of how dependent the community is on the system, generate power. Do we have the power to meet all the needs, including emergencies? Do we have the power to beat all the needs, including emergencies? And if so, the other part about that is not just the system, personnel. I don't mean, I'm talking about training, in the absence of power, where you don't have computer, you don't have telephone as we would normally have it, do we have the means of doing that with personnel staff? I ask that question because during 2008, when that happened, we went to an emergency program, planning, where we, twice a year, began to use the system without computer and without telephones. We use the cell towers with repeaters, the same thing at the handheld, that public safety use in the handheld, and a plan to do that, how we would handle that personnel-wise without computers. Because for those who operate the system, if you don't know that, the computer is big time mute, they'll call in a number, and they go to the computer, and it gives you chemical applications, those things, for the people that's at the stations that are operating. If you don't have that, you have to go here, calculators and what you know. So twice a year, the former water operations, Barry Buckle, myself, John Paquin, some of you've worked with, we developed a system, and we, twice a year, people didn't like it, the employees didn't like it, staff didn't because it made a lot of more work. But we would go for 24 hours, and we did it once in the summertime, and we do, which was normally August, and we do it in February, which is a cold time, where you're literally, it's a lot of, lot of work on the staff. But to know that you could do that in a blackout, to make sure systems and people's needs are met, the customers and the industry's needs are met. And I wanted to ask James, are they still doing anything that they should do, you know if they're doing it anymore?
That particular, no, we are not. I will tell you that we've had several events over the past few years where we have a large power outages. And so our goal is to get generators at every station and at every water tower. I believe that we're almost at every water tower now, correct, Anna?
Yeah.
And so our most recent was just a couple months ago.
Yes.
And so we contacted CAT out of Grand Rapids, and within 24 hours' age supplied us with generators that we needed. Our system, obviously, you know, has a lot of redundancy in it where we can move water around.
Yes.
And so that's, that's part of that backup we have, is that we can move water around.
Yes.
You're right, it's easy to just plug in numbers and computers. But I'll be honest with you, I'm on them all the time, that you really need to know how to do it.
Yes.
Because, and Anna can speak to this as a former operator, we encourage them and we want them to do that on a regular basis so that they don't, they don't rely on the computer, because you're right, if we go down, we don't have it, what do we do?
Right.
So we have had examples of that, where we have to go to a water tower and we look at the pressure gauge, and what does that pressure gauge mean? How many feet of water do we have in the tower?
Yeah.
And so we have charts at each of those that help them figure that out.
Thank you, thank you.
Thank you. Important question, yeah?
Yeah.
Okay, and I know Anna was very involved with the outage in May, where there was serious issues with the Oshmo water supply.
Yeah, it's a, it's a huge team effort. We just, I'm sure you've heard on the news about this gentleman who was trapped in a vault in Comstock.
Yeah.
And that, that was a deal that, after hours, and I was on the phone pretty much all evening between James Baker and the team. Anna, Anna was one of the first persons I called, I say, as an engineer, I need to know some stuff, what do you know, how can you help me? And so we, we always think we need to do tabletop exercises, but we have so many of these events that we get a practice, real-life practice. For those who don't know, my background is, I came from the city apartment, I was a director of public services there for eight years. I also had 29 years of fire experience, and eight is the fire chief. And so I'm used to those kind of emergency situations, so it's just, again, we have an awesome team that we can reach out to. I like your point about phones and stuff like that, because cell phones can go down. We are working on redoing our radio system because we do need a good backup system. Cell phones are really, really nice until they're not.
Yeah. Thank you, thank you.
Thank you. John and Ethan?
I just want to reiterate what the mayor said about the change in how we work together. So, you know, reflecting back at the major power outage in May, my phone rang from Mr. Baker about 10 o'clock in the morning, looking for assistance and help, should I have had staff and trailer units, but we had lost entire power around Gully, pump stations around the lake, so, and not all of those have standby power at them, so dragging trailer units around kept the staff busy for well over three days. So we do collaborate, you know, portage, we've all stepped up and lent a hand when they've asked, the tornado issues like that. I think we are building a quality collaborative effort here in, here in Kalamazoo County, so, you know, it's just how we work together.
Thank you.
Yeah, thanks.
Anything else?
No, nothing today.
And I have nothing else, and I just want to thank everyone. And so we have exhausted the agenda, our next meeting is August 14th here at 8:30 AM, and so we are adjourned.